... city council meeting to order, please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rose.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, every month we present service award pins to employees who are celebrating important anniversaries with the city and January is a busy month, so I have a number of names I'd like to read into the record and then we have one employee who's here to receive his pin from the mayor. So first with five years, councilmember Dale Francisco.[58.14][58.14](Laughter).[61.14][61.14](Applause). You'll get your pin later.[67.06][67.06](Laughter). Also with five years, Norbert Castell Dioro, who's an administrative specialist in finance, Ben Aarons, who's a police officer, Chris Martinez, who's also a police officer, Brian Sather, who's a police officer, and Tom Van Eyck, who's a police officer, Eric Maple, who's a project engineer too in public works, James Winslow, also a project engineer too in public works, Ken Young, also a project engineer in public works, and Robert Blackstone, who's a senior airport operations specialist. With 15 years, Susan Segura, who's police records supervisor in the police department, Officer Kel Ho, who's a police officer, Jeff James, electronic technician too in public works. With 20 years, Chris Oringer, who's a fire captain, Chris Miles, who's also a fire captain, Jeff Brent, street maintenance coordinator in public works, and Bob Ummels, who's a heavy equipment tech in public works, and Dave Dory, who's an accounting assistant in the waterfront. With 25 years, Mark Viera, detective in the police department, Sergeant Jill Beecher, who's also in the police department, and you'll meet him in a moment, Michael Garcia, who's automotive equipment technician in Parks and Rec. And then with 30 years, Al Espinoza, who's a water treatment plant operator three in public works.
So, Mr. Garcia, if you'd like to come on up. Good afternoon.
Hello.
There you go. Michael Garcia was hired in January of 1988 by the Parks and Recreation Department as an automotive equipment technician for the Santa Barbara Golf Club. In October of 2010, he transferred to his current position as automotive equipment technician for the Parks Division. Michael earned a certificate in ornamental horticulture from Santa Barbara City College, putting him in the position to assist with technical issues. Soon after, Michael started with the city, the golf course experienced the drought of 1990, followed by the March Miracle Rains. Michael was instrumental during the project of rebuilding the greens that had suffered significant drought damage. Upon transfer to the Parks Division, Michael set about using his experience to instruct staff on maintenance techniques for the numerous pieces of equipment used in the parks. Michael's a valued member of the Parks Division where he maintains everything from the largest mowers to the smallest chainsaws, providing the necessary equipment for staff to keep the parks beautiful. Michael has also continued his education, earning his bachelor's degree from the University of Laverne, where he is also pursuing his MBA. So, Michael, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the city council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Congratulations.[252.62][252.62](Applause).
Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it. I pretty much just want to thank the Parks Department, Ms. Nancy Rapp, my friend Santos Escobar, who I went to school with, as a matter of fact, so he's a good friend and, of course, a great boss, all the staff that's here from the Parks Department and the golf course division, I really appreciate them being here today and acknowledging my years of service, so thank you.
Thank you very much, congratulations.[295.02][295.02](Applause). Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, move on to public comment, I have two minutes here at the podium. I see some signs in the audience, I just ask it that you do not bring them to the podium, if you want to speak, you can do so, obviously. We'll start with Kate Longstory, be followed by Jessa Lee Coley. Ms. Longstory?
Mayor Schneider and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, it may be a new year, but it's the same old boys' network. Please attend my hearing to establish my reality of legal abuse syndrome on Friday, January 11th, 2013. Department Two, Judge Hill presiding. I'm bringing in Dr. Karen Huffer, who wrote the book Legal Abuse Syndrome. If I'm found mentally incompetent to stand trial, I also am incompetent to be my disabled daughter's conservator. People should have thought a little bit more when they decided to persecute me. So, I was going to read my horoscope, it says, according to his analysis, Brezny's analysis, I will get what I want in the next six months, I'll receive my prize, I will earn my badge, I will win a big game or claim my birthright and find my treasure. I hope that is true. There is deep seated and widespread school and government corruption in Santa Barbara County and in the country. Taxpayer-paid lawyers and crony administrators collude, conspire, and cover up wrongdoing.
Ready for corruption?
They collude, conspire, and cover up corruption. The retaliation against whistleblowers, against advocates and activists, against citizens, is rampant and severe. May it come to an end this year. Thank you.
Jessa Lee Coley will be followed by Julio R.[468.06][468.06](Applause).
Mayor Schneider and members of the council, my name is Jessa Lee Coley and I'm the volunteer coordinator of Common Ground Santa Barbara County. Common Ground Santa Barbara County, in partnership with 100,000 Homes Campaign and the Central Coast Collaboration on Homelessness, is dedicated to housing the most vulnerable on our streets in Santa Barbara County. We are currently recruiting volunteers to help with Registry Week, which is January 22nd and 23rd. This is when we survey the homeless community using the vulnerability index and the point-in-time count to discover how many friends we have living on the streets in Santa Barbara County. We would like to invite you all to participate in the survey. The training day for Santa Barbara will take place on January 19th, which is a Saturday, and to sign up, you can visit our website, which is commongroundsb.org, and for any questions you might have, you can contact me through email, which is cgvolunteers@gmail.com, or through the phone area code 805-451-5604. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Julio R. will be followed by Hanson.
Hello, Chief Sanchez and members of the city council, my name is Julio, and I want to take advantage of the opportunity that you are all gathered for this meeting today to ask a few questions regarding the proposed gang injunction that was filed over two years ago. I, along with many of the pre-ears who are with me here today, find it alarming and disrespectful that there has been zero community input on the matter, especially when this is an issue that would disproportionately affect the lower-income community and immigrant communities of both the west side and east side of Santa Barbara. I want to express that this is not how I feel the issue of youth violence should be handled, and based on PRA requests filed toward city offices and the police department, I cannot tolerate and understand how this injunction alone has already cost the city nearly half a million dollars. After this meeting and a public comment, I hope that any or all of you can shed light on the process of how this injunction was filed, the justifications you have for it, and I would like Chief Sanchez to provide information on how the Santa Barbara Police Department determines who is and isn't a gang member. Under the conditions of the injunction document, it seems that I might fit your description.
Thank you.[622.91][622.91](Applause). You're going to have to stop the, please refrain from clapping, thank you.
We can clap for a 25-year pin, we can clap for what he said.
Ms. Longstory.[633.41][633.41](Applause).
It cannot be arbitrary.
Mr. Hanson, you are next, followed by Nancy McCrady. Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Hanson, you're next.
I'm going to give you two minutes, right? No, maybe not.
Either, you're coming up, Mr. Hanson? Thank you. And you can leave those signs at the table there, don't bring those up, please. Leave them at the bench.
One there.
No, you can leave that one at the bench, too. Mr. Hanson, you're using up your two minutes as you, thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay, probably most people saw this in the paper, news press, Saturday, where they transit arrested in downtown, fire. That's probably where 90% of people stopped, they didn't read the article. All they know is that bad person quotes homeless, because in the article, when they say homeless, it kind of sounds like, you know, okay, because they say authorities, say Mr. Esten, a familiar face among the downtown homeless, they say that nicely, someone, but when it comes up to transit, 41-year-old transit is in custody. The same as they would sit there and sometimes talk about Jews, Jews, you know, we've got to get the Jews, or the niggers. I just went and saw this movie, 100 and some nine times, they said nigger. Well, that's in the past now. And Martin Luther King sat there and said, hey, they passed legislation to say that, hey, black people have some rights and this and that, well, they don't have to like me, they just don't have to lynch me. And we've had some issues in this city, stabbing a homeless person, transit, subhuman. So, we would like to have you, Mayor, our leader, make sure that we get the message out, that that's a hate language, and we want to see that stop. I went to the South Coast Organizing Committee for Homeless, and they have a document, and in that document, they talk about, let's stop this hate language. One of the words, transit. So, it's just a matter of time, we keep working it, we keep working it, we got to not call these people transits. I went to the meeting where the chief was at, town hall meeting up at the History Museum, it's all perception, you know, most of the people are nice people, even the guy that runs the mall, hey, I like the homeless. I had a friend, restorative police, in contact with his parents back in Pennsylvania, that's not the right way to do it, but it's all about having respect for each other, and we can do the best we can, and we need to talk to so many kids in black.
Your time is up, Mr. Hanson.
They are scary, but you know what, we're all people, they are unhoused, I'm in an RV right now, you have a nice house, but we want you to do something about it, or we'll ask for a recall, or we'll ask for a boycott, I don't know.
Your time's up, Mr. Hanson.
She violated around when we did a boycott on transit 20 years ago, and it was effective, so anyway.
Your time is up, Mr. Hanson.
We hope you can help us out, okay?
Nancy McCrady will be followed by Dr. Johns.
Hi, kids. I just got back from a meeting at Lois Cap's office, and we talked about a broader way of looking at the homeless issue, and those things are trade schools, work programs, et cetera, et cetera. And we've got to, we've got to start funding in different directions, other than just social service programs, so, because people are losing their dignity and their independence and all sorts of things, anyway. So, I too came up here to talk to you about the word transient. Andrew was not a transient, he was a homeless resident of this community, and I just, the homeless are just saying, why do they call us transients? And it makes them feel bad, it makes me feel bad because this is happening to them, we have got to stop using that word, we've got to stop labeling people, we've got to stop separating people off from one another, because we're all human, we're all on this planet together. So, that's what I wanted to say. So, thank you very much for listening, and please, 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 think about it, don't let the police department, don't let the news press, don't let KEYT News say transient anymore. Thank you.[907.13][907.13](Applause).
Dr. Johns will be followed by Rogelio Trujillo. And then the final speaker will be Jeff Bard.
I know Mr. Hanson didn't mean anything by using the word, but I would prefer if we say the N-word. Now, I'm here representing a program for at-risk youth, and so how do you tell when there's a at-risk youth? When that youth no longer is communicating? Parents know, parents know what an at-risk youth is, parents know that. And teachers sometimes know and sometimes don't know, because they really don't know children. Like, my mother, when I was just as small, my brother and I were upstairs, and we'd be fighting, wrestling, doing everything, but when we became very quiet, we were at risk as far as my mother was concerned, that's right, because she'd shout upstairs, Bobby, Lawrence, what's going on? So, and that's kind of like an old, old technique, and I don't think parents really get into trying to find out what communicating to their children. Make the intervention, the intervention could be as small as, hey, what's up? What's up? See, and I know there's not one person, maybe three people in this room could say, what's up? See, but that's communicating to your child, your, the parents don't know how to do that, it becomes too late when they don't communicate. So, the program for at-risk youth will put children through vocational or academic programs, they will show children, what's up, baby? Thank you, thank you.
Rogelio Trujillo.
Mayor and members of city council, I came today really to speak about the police injunction, gang police injunction, but apparently it's not going on today, somebody changed the agenda, and we don't know about it. So, maybe next time, the public can be notified before you change the agenda again, that's why I thought it was going to happen.
The agenda has not been changed, Mr. Trujillo. Oh, no, I'll just, I'll stop, I'll give you extra time, I just want to explain, the agenda's not been changed, it's the same, it's a police department update, and, but if you want to speak during public comment about the injunction, I'll allow you to do so.
Well, I think I wait for that occasion. What I want to speak today about is that for almost a year, I've been asking three members of city council, specifically you, Eileen, dear Mayor, about a blue spot around City Hall, close to the entrance of City Hall, either the front or the back, for handicapped people, and I don't get it yet. Today, I have to park almost by the restaurant over there, because there's no parking here. You see, the police park on the 15-minute spots, because they can stay there the whole day. And this is what happened today, you go outside right now and see the police cars parked in the, in the green spots. Therefore, the handicapped people got to look for a parking spot, and it's only one by the Laguera Plaza, over there by the news press, but it's not in the entrances, front or back of City Hall. And I speak to three of you already, mainly to you, Mayor, and three times about it, and you say it's going to be resolved. Each time I talk to you, you told me it's going to be resolved. It doesn't happen yet. I talked to you about this on March of last year, almost a year ago, is that true? Or I'm lying? Or you forgot? Please answer my question. And I talked to Mr. Grant about this, and I talked to Kathy Murillo about this, and I talked to her when he was getting elected to city, elected to city council, and I have no action yet. So, why do we need as citizens, handicapped citizens, for us to have a parking spot, or two, in the entrance of City Hall for us? I think the state law requires this, but you are the law and you can change it, right? Like, you change the agenda, you say it's not been changed, but I know it's been changed.
Time's up, Mr. Trujillo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope you got the message.
Mr. Bard?
I hope you got the message, do you?
Your time is up, Mr. Trujillo, thank you very much.
Do you got the message?
We heard you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bard?
The hearing, casual hearing.
Mr. Trujillo, your time is up.
And the listening has got to go right here, on your brain.
Mr. Trujillo, please, please step away from the podium, thank you. Mr. Bard will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of council, la gripe es muy peligrosa para los niños, children, y para la gente mejor edad, old folks, y mujeres embarazadas, pregnant women. In mi opinión, las vacunas son muy importantes. Yo no soy un médico, I'm not a doctor, but I got my vaccine last week, I was sick for a day, but I wasn't miserable for two weeks, and I didn't infect anybody else. Pero, no es 100% seguro, the vaccine is 65 to 70% effective. Entonces, procura de lavarse las manos, mucho, todas personas, y cubrirse la boca a toser. Es muy importante, particularmente en Casa Esperanza, y mi amigo, Michael Foley, is very much in support of my work, as are the people at the rescue mission, and I talked to Sheriff Brown this morning, and I talked to Dr. Wada this morning, and we're working to update CDC protocols, so that the folks that unfortunately do have to do some time, for whatever reason, rightly or wrongly, or the people who are at the mission, do not get the flu. So, our tourists don't come to Santa Barbara to get the flu, so our UCSB students don't come here to get the flu, they can't really get an education and enjoy the beach. And I have to say, I am very grateful at the many supporters that I've had in this town who've stood by me, and it hasn't been easy, there's been a little bit of pushback, there's some misunderstandings that I'm not going to go into publicly. But I do want to thank particularly, on this particular board, this council, this councilmember House, has been right on the money, he's not somebody who puts his finger in the wind, he's somebody who thinks about what's right and he thinks about his constituents. It was a privilege to serve on the advisory committee with Councilman House, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment, move on to the consent calendar, and I believe there's an item to read.
Item six, records destruction for waterfront department, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the waterfront department and the administration office.
Thank you, without further objection, we'll wait for the reading, is there an item to take off, or is there a motion for the consent calendar?
There is, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, moved on to a report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee met today and heard a detailed report and asked many important questions concerning a loan modification to an affordable housing project, the El Patio project on Vill Lucero, and that item was recommended for approval to the full council and will be coming to us next week.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, item number 10.
Police department update.
Thank you, Chief Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council, we're going to give you a department update, the first one of the year. We're going to start with school safety. Right after the horrible incident in Connecticut, I was in contact with Dr. Cash of the school district that weekend, he met with his principals on that Sunday, and over the phone, we discussed a variety of issues and plans to meet. The following week, Dr. Cash and I met with all of the school principals and vice principals and other school administrators to discuss the issue of school safety, what the department's policies were, what our protocols were, and it was a very fruitful meeting. What we did discuss, and the partnership that continues to grow, is that over the last week or two and in the next few weeks, my department will continue to monitor the schools before and after school, we've been doing that for years, but we've enhanced it after that terrible incident. The other thing that we're going to be doing is we will be consulting each principal regarding each school's vulnerability. For the last 10 years, the police cars and the detective cars of the police department have had maps and blueprints, if you will, of every school, we've done that for quite a few years. A few years ago, we also had every sworn officer walk through every school. We're going to begin doing that again, because of the fact that we have so many new employees on the sworn side, and we're also going to assign a variety of people to consult with each principal this month and next month, in terms of the school vulnerabilities, from a public safety standpoint. It was a great meeting, we're going to meet again, the principals are happy with us, and we also are meeting with schools, not in our school district, but in our city, with regard to the same policies and procedures, and we're about to get the maps of those schools. In essence, for the last 10 years, we have had a, what they call an active shooter policy. We have plans, should an active shooter, and if not a shooter, a threat to any school, we have plans set, we've had them set for 10 years, we continue to enhance them, and I guarantee you that we would be ready for such an event. Obviously, we plan for the worst and hope for the best. Schools are supposed to be the safest place, it was a horrible tragedy, to say the least, in Connecticut, and we immediately, along with the school district, began to look at the protocols and policies and procedures to keep our students and our staff safe on school campuses. We continue to do that, we currently have a school resource officer, as you know, but she's assigned at the high school, but our other officers are assigned to the schools before school begins. We certainly don't want to hit a panic alarm, but we do want to tell the community that we're there for them, the schools are as safe as they can possibly be, Dr. Cash and his staff and my staff are working together to enhance that to the best of our ability. Again, every school is unique, and that's why we're dealing with each school's vulnerability separately, we would always be ready to respond in such incidents. So, I wanted to share that with you, it was an incident that really brought to light a lot of things that we need to do a little bit better, and basically communicate with each other better, so I wanted to share that with you, but we're all, we're all over that. I want to talk a little bit about Part I crimes, you have them in front of you and on the screen, I'm not going to go over every single one of those numbers, but I do want to focus a little bit, and I'll focus a little bit later in depth on our burglary problem, which is very huge, and I'll get to that when we get to a specific pin map of burglaries. In November of 11, we had 37 burglaries, in November, we had 33 of 12. In December, we had 56 of 2011, and then we had 52 in December. It looks consistent, but it's, it is going up, there's a variety of reasons for that, we're addressing the issues, but in Santa Barbara, this seems to be one of the biggest issues, especially in December, and we'll get to those slides in a minute. In total, November of 2012, we had 260 Part I crimes, in December of 2011, we had 280, and 278 last month combined. If you notice on the bottoms, on the bottom part of that slide, it'll just be very simple for you, there in November 2012, we were at 260 Part I crimes, and 278 in December of this year. It was a heavy month for us in terms of Part I crimes. Again, I'm not going to go over one of those digits up there, but I thought I would share with you, on the bottom part of that slide, where it says UCR Part I reported crimes, calendar years 1984 through 2012, if you look at 1987, and again, I think some, most of you have it in front of you, it went up in 1988 in terms of Part I crimes, and the reason for that is that in 1987, finally, domestic violence became a felony, and that's why the crimes went up. The crimes were still there, but now they were classified as Part I, that is the reason for that. Had in 1987, had that not become a felony, the numbers would have stayed the same, but they would have been listed under Part II. Fortunately, in the state of California, we recognize, obviously, that domestic violence was a huge issue and it should be a felony. So, in 1987, when 273.5 of the penal code became a felony, you saw the numbers rise in Part I. Interestingly enough, in 1983, is when the three-strikes law came into effect, and you look on the screen, and right after the look on the screen, and right after the three-strikes law came into effect, Part I crimes began to decline. In 2011, we were at 3,100-plus, and in 2012, we're a little bit higher than that. In 2012, we ended with a little over 3,600 Part I crimes. So we were busy, and felonies were being committed. Part II crimes, which are really, they're forgeries, frauds, things like embezzlement, vandalism, those types of things, gambling, and liquor laws and public drunkenness, those are really Part II crimes. In November of 2012, we were a little over 2,100 of those crimes being reported, and it declined a little bit in December to 2024. It's a slight drop in Part II crimes from November and December, and that's how we ended that year. This is the alarming slide I wanted to show you in terms of burglaries. These are burglaries that occurred in the month of December. The yellow ones mean that the burglaries occurred in the daytime. About a third of those burglaries occurred when people were home in the daytime. The blue are burglaries that occurred, these are residential burglaries, by the way, homes, apartments, condos. The blue are ones that occurred at night. 10 of those blue burglaries that you see there were what we call hot prowls. People were asleep, and they were being victimized while they were home and asleep. On two of those occasions, the victims woke up and confronted the suspects, and the suspects got away, unfortunately, before we could get there. If there were any arrests up there in December, you would see a red star, and if you notice, there are none. So we're working all of those cases today on top of the ones that we had before. It is an issue, it's a huge issue, and it should be alarming to the community, this is happening, and December was a tough month for us in terms of residential burglaries. We have begun, as of yesterday, to make some adjustments to our staffing, to move people around to address this issue, along with the detectives who are working the cases. We're going to be moving people around, and we've made several very significant changes to our deployment to address this issue in the next few weeks, and hopefully, the next time I come before you will have a bunch of red stars up there. But this has been an issue. The community has certainly called some of you and called me in terms of what are we doing with these burglaries. If you look, there's really no real cluster, it's just all over the map, literally. So December was a very, very tough month for us. Some of the issues that have come--
Get some questions, Steve.
I'm sorry.
I'll start with Ms. Murillo, and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Sanchez, so what happens? So they call the police, but by the time you get there, the burglar has run away? Or do they call the next day, and so it's a... Do you have any idea what the general explanation is?
I do. Sometimes, the victims do not know of the burglary till the next day, and then they call us, sometimes. They'll wake up and something's missing, or they'll get, in case, in terms of a daytime burglary, they'll get home from work and something's missing, or the house has obviously been victimized, and they do call us. So our community is good about calling us. What we do have, in many of these cases, are fingerprints, so what we're doing a lot, and the process is, we fingerprint every one of those locations, inside, outside, we talk to neighbors, and we do all of that. And many times, if we don't catch them in the act, and by the way, over the last two or three months, our patrol teams have caught. In November, we did catch three or four in-progress burglaries at night, and the patrol was able to get there immediately and make those arrests, but this is just for December. But the reports are coming through, we investigate them, and we do a thorough job of investigating them. And all of these have been assigned and have detectives investigating them, but some have leads, some don't, some have evidence, some don't. So that's the process. But in all of these cases, we do have police reports for them.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned the absolute random nature of this. Do you draw any conclusions from that? Is this, are people cruising for opportunities in cars and just jumping in?
Well, it really runs the gamut. A lot of these burglaries are really opportunistic things. These are, well, I'll get to the car issues. This is residence here, and you can imagine how blatant, when people are home asleep, that people are breaking into their homes. That's a dangerous situation. Daytime, we've had several who were home in the daytime who were also burglarized. There's a variety of things happening here. We can guess, but I will tell you that several of these burglaries that we saw, especially in November, were folks who had fallen under AB 109. There was a recent article, I think I sent you, there's this debate whether the early release of prison inmates into our communities are causing a rise in crime. The answer is yes. Is it the only reason? The answer to that is no. But there are some statistical data statewide that is telling you that people are recommitting the crime. In Santa Barbara in November, 50% of our arrests for burglars, 50% of the arrests for burglars, were folks that had it not been the realignment done in the state, they would have still been in custody. So it does play a part. It doesn't play the whole part. There are a variety of reasons, and we can talk about social issues and the economy, and it was Christmas time and all that. I think it's a little bit of everything. But what's interesting is, in Santa Barbara County, the sheriff and I and the other chiefs are beginning to pay attention, all our departments, as is probation, to see how many of those early releases continue to reoffend. But just think, in our city, in November, 50% of our arrests were people who should have been in custody, and that should be a concern for all of us. So something's not working. Doesn't mean that all of them are going to recommit, that, you know, that we're full of bad people, no. But some do recommit. It concerns me, in our city, when 50% of November's arrests are people that normally, prior to this year, would have still been in custody for whatever they were in custody for.
Do we have any feel about whether these are homegrown people or out-of-towners?
A little of both. In terms of, we don't know until we arrest them, obviously, but over the last year or two, it's probably been 50/50. Last year, at this time, if you remember, I shared with you, or I think it was actually the first time I brought the first update to you, we had two or three crews from Los Angeles, Bakersfield, San Diego, who had actually been here committing those crimes, and they were clearly out-of-towners, and they were all adults. So it was very interesting to see that, and those were all arrested. We arrested all of those folks on all of those burglaries a year ago. So it does run the gamut, and we won't know until we make the arrests.
Is the expectation that these are drug-related, with property stolen that can be fenced for cash?
Part of it is that, the good news to what you're commenting on, Councilman Hotchkiss, is that we have a great relationship with all our pawn shops in the city and the county. We train them, they train with us, they're very good about reporting anything that they believe is out of the ordinary. They're very good, and they're partnered with us in a huge way county-wide. So a lot of these things may be pawned off, fenced off, if you will, outside of our county, and even in other cities, and maybe even other states. Last year, when we had the major crews doing the burglaries, they were taking safes, jewelry, furniture, televisions, expensive paintings and drawings. These were clearly those types of individuals that were crews. The thing that is, over the summer, over last summer, the biggest issue were our rental properties that were being burglarized. And we would have crews from other cities, if not folks from our own area, to go look at a rental as a potential client for that rental for the summer. Well, they weren't interested in renting the place, and they staked it out, they saw the property that was there, and then they would come back and burglarize. Fortunately, the two crews that were doing that, both from Los Angeles, we arrested eight people on those cases. So we're on top of it, but I wanted to share just December's statistic, and the reason I want you to remember that is because I'm hoping that when I come back, we'll have a whole bunch of red stars on there, that we have recovered some property and we have made some arrests.
Okay, please go on, I don't want to hold you up, thank you.
Well, Mr. Rouse has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick, chief, to follow up on Mr. Hotchkiss a little bit. You mentioned the three-strikes law as being a pivot point at which the crime stats began to change, and now, of course, the efforts to revise that, along with the realignment. This trend curve that we see in the most recent month, that's obviously a disturbing trend, and hopefully, that's going to change, but does that overlay with other communities in the state? Or have you done, do we have comparative data, for example, of these kind of trends, where we had the pivot point, and then, of course, realignment, because that's just more than just Santa Barbara? And I was just kind of curious to see where we stood with the rest of the state.
The answer is yes, Councilman Rouse, Madam Mayor and Council. We are in touch, the tri-county chiefs in San Luis Obispo County, Ventura County, and Santa Barbara County, we're all working together. I mentioned that the sheriff here and all the chiefs here are working on this issue of AB 109 and the reoffending. All three counties are doing this. Our goal is, in the springtime, to bring something together in terms of representing the entire tri-county area, to show the state of California that the realignment may have not have been a great idea at the end of the day. So we're keeping track. Probation has assigned full-time people to this, and in terms of being full-time with us, they are. I spoke with the chief probation chief just before coming to this meeting, so we're on board in terms of keeping track of it, and it's going to be interesting to see. Right now, I do not believe there's enough evidence to clearly say that the realignment is at fault, but we do have some evidence that tells us that some of these crimes are being committed by them, and that's what we're working towards. But yes, we are paying attention to it in the entire tri-county area.
Go ahead, chief.
Move on to the next slide, which are vehicle burglaries. We had a few, we made no arrests in December, we're hopefully, in January, will be a good month, but I will have to say that about 90% of these are vehicles that are left unlocked or keys in the car. We probably have a very small percentage of these where the car has been manipulated through a breaking of a window and such. We've had some commercials on television that you may have seen with Detective Drayton talking about this, and checked this morning, for the last six years, most of the burglary for motor vehicles, over 90% have been because people are leaving their keys in the car, the car running, or unlocked vehicles. So that explains this one. The commercial burglaries have been quite a bit more successful for a couple of reasons. Most of these are, if not all of these, are obviously businesses, restaurants, and alike, and we've made quite a few arrests. Most of these burglaries were committed by the same individuals, so it wasn't a, we're not talking about eight or nine separate suspects in this, and we made detectives and patrol made some great arrests. About a third of those were actually in-progress, where the alarm, the silent alarm went off. Some of these, there were hidden cameras where we identified the suspects, and in most of them, they were sloppy, I guess, and there were fingerprints just about everywhere. The good news is, the majority of the property in these commercial burgs are being recovered, but this is where we've had most of our successes. You will see some that are there with no arrests, and we're still working on them.
Chief, if I might, typically, what's stolen from a commercial place? I mean, I would think people were after, excuse me, cash, and you're not going to get that here, right?
Well, we have, in the last six to seven weeks, some of our restaurants are leaving huge amounts of cash in their safes or in other locations. We're working some that we think might be inside jobs by employees being the culprits. But what we're seeing is computers leaving the place, files, small safes, things of that nature. And depending on the type of business, if it isn't locked down, it's going to walk out the door. But we've been very lucky, the majority of those red stars had cameras in the buildings, which made life a little easier for my detectives to solve. This slide, November and December, priority one and two calls. You know, people want us to respond quickly. In priority one calls, these are calls that may result in injury or death. In November, we averaged a response time of 6.5 minutes. These are black and whites, our police officers in patrol. In December, it went down a little bit, we were there in less than six minutes, 5.6, which is really, really good. Doesn't necessarily mean we're driving faster, it just means we're lucky and we're closer than we were before. It just depends on which officer gets that call, to tell you the truth. But our goal is to be under six minutes, and we've been able to accomplish that. Priority twos are calls that may not result in injury or death, but we want to get under 11 minutes. In November of '12, it was at 11.6, and in December, it was 12.1. And all priorities total, you see the numbers, 24.2 and 28.9. Our biggest issues are priority ones and twos, where people's lives are at stake, there's crimes in progress, injury, and the like. And we're right on the money with our P3 goals of staying under the times that we've set for our goals. In November of last year, we had 43 priority one calls for service, just in that one month, which is about two a day, and in December, it was busy. We had 60. Many of those burglaries in progress, robberies in progress, assaults in progress, and December was a busy month for us. But again, if you look back at the other page, we won't do that now, the response times were still very good. Priority two calls, again, those calls that are not life-threatening. In November, we had a little over 1,100, and in December, we went up to a little over 1,200 calls for service of priority twos. Now, this is, these are calls, these are not observation calls or things that the officers observe on their own in their tour of duty. These are direct calls that come into dispatch. In between these calls, the officers are doing observation arrests, extra patrols and the like, and meetings, and community meetings. So these are actual calls that go out on the air. Want to talk about gang incidents. Overall, gang incidents is up about 9%. We continue to stay aggressive on it. If you look, we've been pretty lucky in terms of homicides. November of '12, none. It's December '12, we have not had one for a while, and I'm knocking on wood here, but it is an issue. And without going all the numbers, a pretty simple math. We got the, I got the math right this time, and so I knew you'd be checking for that. In terms of other, one of you asked me what other means, you know, what other things that is going on out there that we're paying attention to. The other really means graffiti, any gang graffiti, drunk in public, which is not a gang crime, it's a crime, they're getting cited, and some of these individuals have been cited for that as another person who is not a gang member. So it's not a gang crime, but because they have been arrested or cited, we included them in some of these incidents. In terms of the gang injunction, I can't speak much to it, and I won't speak much to it because of the fact that it is still in the courts, it is where it is. The city attorney and the district attorney and my office and my detectives continue to work on this, and we really have no news on where it's going, because we really don't know until the court decides what they're going to do. And that's really all I can say, unless the city attorney has a comment. I think that's really where we are.
Murillo has a question.
So chief, going back to the other, so you say, so a young person might be drunk in public, but they're not doing something that's gang-related, but they're somehow associated with the gang, so you're including it as a gang incident, even if it's not related to gang activity?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to talk to you about that another time.
Sure.
I'm not sure if that's, if I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Chief Sanchez, just real quick, when it says gang incidents, I don't, I can't tell from that what percentage of these or what number of these are youth, are minors, and what percentage of these or what numbers of these are adults? And is there a way for us to know from, not from these figures, I don't think, but... us to know from, not from these figures, I don't think, but are these, how does that split out here?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I can certainly get them for you. And the next time I do this, I'll break it down to adult and juvenile, if you like.
Okay. And I think it came, it sort of came up for me in a comment that happened earlier today where it was about the injunction, but it just raised an issue for me. And that was the assumption that the injunction is targeted towards the young people who are associated with gangs. And I don't know that that's true. And I'm looking at this, and I'm trying to see where this comes down.
Currently, we have no juveniles listed in the gang injunction. They're all adults.
Okay. Maybe you can help us with the information on this then, after the meeting.
I'll break it down.
Thank you.
Chief, when you say it's up 9%, you mean it's up 9% from November to December?
Right.
Just in that one month?
Right.
In general, from a year ago, or do you have those numbers yet?
I do not.
Okay.
On restorative policing, I wanted to share with you that the non-sworn folks that we have, it still continues to work greatly. We did lose one of our community service liaisons. He accepted a full-time teaching position, so we lost him. But within a couple of weeks, we replaced that person with another person. So, he's there now. And that's actually one of our, happens to be one of our chaplains, Pastor Chuck Reed. And he's an employee with us now. So, he replaced him. We have other people currently in backgrounds for the other position that we have open. But other than that, it's working out great. Sergeant Olson and Tactical Patrol Force continually use the civilian employees in terms of the liaisons and all the work they do with the businesses. These folks are making hundreds of contacts in the business community on a weekly basis and also allowing the officers to stay in the field while they transport people to Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Santa Maria, wherever, whatever the case is. So, these folks are really, really doing great. We're approved for three restorative outreach specialists. Two of these positions have been filled. These are experts in the field of mental illness. And we have one currently in backgrounds. But there was some rumor that we had lost a few of these folks, and we weren't making all the contacts. And it's really the opposite. These civilians are doing a great job, and they're being of great help. And the clients appreciate them and many times would appreciate it not being a blue suit, but being someone in a blue polo shirt or yellow polo shirt giving them assistance. So, this continues to go on.
Mr. White has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Chief, I'd just follow up on that. At the Fire and Police Commission meetings in the last few months, we've, it's come up that there have been vacancies in this area as your department has put forward information about the hirings and so forth and so on. And so, that is something that I know we're all curious about is how much vacancy we're experiencing with those, with that arm of our effort. And I hear you saying that we've got people in background, and there are replacements coming up to fill the positions. But that will be an area which I'd appreciate hearing about, and I know my colleagues would too, of how much vacancy and on a, you know, quarterly or six-monthly basis, are we experiencing any significant amount of vacancies there, or are we feel like we're basically fully staffed? And if there is an issue there, I know we'd like to hear about it so that perhaps some other strategies could be looked at as far as making sure that stays fully staffed because obviously, it seems to be a successful program. And when we, the folks that are out there are being a good help to our system, but...
For the most part, since you gave me the directive a year ago to hire these folks, we've been fully staffed.
Good, okay.
We have one vacancy today. That's it.
Okay. And that would be to be expected, is to have a rotation of one?
To be expected, and, right. And we have four people, I think five people, in backgrounds for the one vacancy. But other than for the last couple of months, we've been at full staffing in that unit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, what is the deployment strategy for these civilian assistance? Is it daytime, nighttime, and is it regional beats? I mean, what, can you give us a little update on that, please?
Yes. For the most part, they're assigned the State Street Corridor and the Milpus Corridor, and some of the parks. They're going out and looking into the parks for clients, trying to get them assistance. They're in contact with Ed Olson and the Tactical Patrol Force on bicycles if there's another need or an enforcement action that needs to be taken. But they're really sort of pied-pipers for a lot of these folks who are in need, who are homeless, and many of whom are mentally ill, many of whom have not eaten for days. And they're out there doing the social work that needs to be done. And if things have to be done in terms of a law enforcement approach to it, then they get on the radio and call Ed Olson and his crew to come and assist. Other than that, they are doing no enforcement. They are looking around in the crevices in terms of camps next to the freeway, under the bridges, in the parks, to see who is out there and to try to see if they need some assistance. Then we take them to get fed, get their meds, take them to the shelter if they so wish. But for the most part, they're not getting involved at all in an enforcement aspect unless they see something that needs enforcement, and then they call the blue suits to come in. But they do this every day. They go up and down the corridor. Part of their job is to meet with all the businesses, to walk in some of their needs, and to really lead the way to enhance the communication. So, they're doing a wonderful job. They stay busy, and they literally make over 100 contacts a week each. Some are repetitive to some of the clients that they see all week long. But clearly, they're doing a fabulous job. And as soon as we get the one vacancy filled, we'll be back to full staffing again.
Go ahead, Head.
Thank you. Over the years, for the last 10 years, restorative policing and all the things that fall under that umbrella has been a city issue along with the police department. And over the years, we've been able to enhance some of our partnerships with other entities, other great folks who do great work. And I decided that we needed to bring everybody together to see where we are countywide with some of our help because the police department and the city of Santa Barbara can't do it alone. So, on November 28, we met with a variety of agencies. I brought them all together to, number one, thank them for their partnership with us and the great work that they do with the homeless and mentally ill. But to ask them how we, as a police department, could be better and to ask them for additional assistance. And it was a great meeting. You see on the list there, we had Department of Social Services was there, Housing Authority, Legal Aid, Common Ground was there, the Mental Health Services were there, and we had some representatives from the Congresswoman, Congresswoman Capps' office. Quite a few people. There were more than is listed here. We're going to be meeting with them bimonthly to discuss folks and what their needs are, what the police department, the city of Santa Barbara, needs from these entities. And we're going to help each other out because we're looking and we're addressing the same clients. And we need to get our act together as a whole team, holistic team, to address the issue of homelessness and mental illness. So, we're working hard, and I think it's going to be a great success to meet bimonthly with this group of folks to discuss how we could do it better and not do it once a year, but do it bimonthly to look at the statistics, look at the services, and have everyone in the room that are the boots on the ground. We don't need a meeting with the chief of police and other people. We need meeting with the boots on the ground who are addressing these folks on a daily basis. And this is going to occur bimonthly. And it started on November 28. On the Citizens Academy side, recently, we did a Spanish-language Citizens Academy on the east side. It went from October to December 13. It was held at Franklin Elementary School. Daycare was provided. Over the years, it's been really tough to do some of the, in English and in Spanish, Citizens Academies without some type of daycare or night care, if you will. So, that was taken care of. This class had 56 participants from ages 18 to 84. It was fantastic. Graduation is on January 10, I believe, at 6:00 PM at Franklin School. I would love to see you there. A lot of my officers will be there. I would love to see you there. There will be food, so you know the cops will show up for that. But we're looking forward to this. It was a great class, and the next academy is scheduled for February. The interesting thing about it, in February, it'll be on the west side somewhere. We undecided where. But this, we're considering heavily doing this in both languages, English and Spanish, at the same time. My reason for that is to bring communities together. And we're going to attempt to do this at the same time in both languages. So, we're looking forward to that. We've worked with Jerry Schwartz and people on the west side to bring this together. We spoke about it at the forum we did about eight or nine months ago where some of you attended. And we're at that point, and we're hoping to have over 100 participants at least. So, we're looking forward to that.
Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
How many hours is involved for individuals in the academy?
Yeah, it's two and a half hours for eight weeks. It's usually on a Wednesday or Thursday.
Two and a half hours each week?
Yes.
Okay. And in the evening? And do they get practical experience to go out on ride-alongs?
I'm about to get right into that. Yeah, on the next slide, if we look at that...
Describe as much as you can because I got a feeling there are a lot of people out there that might want to do this. You might get some more recruits.
We've been, we do this on the radio all the time. We announce this all the time and in the newspaper. These are some of the topics that people could look forward to seeing. Community-oriented policing, policing-community partnerships, investigations, gangs, and so on. The gentleman there with Officer Gutierrez is on a ride-along. They go on ride-alongs, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful thing. What really is amazing is that the first night of class, they're all very quiet, as you might imagine. They're afraid to say anything. And by the last night, none of the staff can say anything because these folks are just running the whole show. They're so happy. And, you know, it's not a class to try to win people over to police work. It's a class to allow the community to see the police department for what it is and to share with them why we do what we do, why we don't do other things, and assist them in learning their rights and also what they can do to make their community better. And it's worked out really well. And this group was very exciting, and we're looking forward to this graduation. And I want to, in public, thank Officer Gutierrez and the rest of the B.C.s that I think they're still in the back without me turning around. I think they're still here, had that have done a great job of putting this together. It takes a lot of work to put the curriculum together, to get the people there. We have officers teaching the classes. We have to have officers who come in to teach the classes. As an example, the detective bureau to talk about, let's say, senior citizen fraud, where they come in and talk about that, or our juvenile officers. It is a full course, and very few people miss a class because they know when they miss one week, they've missed a lot. And it's a great, great relationship with the community. And I'm very proud to say that all of the Spanish-language ones, just about all the Spanish-language ones have been at least twice the size of the English-speaking ones. And I think that speaks highly of our community. Next slide, please. I don't know if you can see that very well. This is the current class. To the left, top left, this is a driving simulator that police officers are put through at the academy. It's a simulator where they get behind a wheel, and they're in a pursuit or they're going to a call for service. And this year, we took the Citizens Academy students to Hancock, and they all did the driving simulator and just had a ball. Down at the bottom, you see, that's actually the class that's going to graduate very soon. At the bottom left, you see that at Franklin School. And it's hard to see, but they're involved. We see our K-9 officer doing a demonstration. The one in the middle, at top middle, is actually, all three are students. One is pretending to be a person who's in need of something. He may be having some issues. And we have two other students pretending to be police officers to see how they would handle this situation. Because many times, they want, why did the cops do this? And I think the best way to do it in a Citizens Academy is to actually do a scenario where they play the cops, and we watch, and we let them react. And then they discuss it later and say, oh, my gosh, I, you know, I didn't know that it would take this much work to handle this type of scenario. So, we don't get up there with cops and show them. We give them the scenarios on paper, and we go through these scenarios, much like students, cadets in the academy would go through. And they really gain a lot of knowledge about that. But I will tell you that right now, the most popular show is getting behind that simulator like that woman is, and she just had a ball. I think they had to drag her out of there. She wanted to do it two times in a row, I think. It was an E-ticket, right, for those of us old enough to say E-ticket, Frank. Thank you. Next slide, please. Coffee with a cop. I want to thank officially and openly Officer Casey Butel. This is her brainchild. She came to me and said, I've got a great idea. We need to go have coffee with the community and let the community come to us and ask us questions and have, as she put it, a relationship with us in a great setting. So, I sent her off, and I want to thank Casey for her great idea. At the last one, which was on the mesa, we had Time Magazine show up. They're going to feature this in a future Time Magazine article. After a while, they, we started talking about restorative policing. They're about to come down, I believe, in a month to do a story on what Santa Barbara is doing with the homeless mentally ill. So, this is great stuff. So, I want to thank Casey in public here for her great idea. So far, and some of you have been to those, and I thank you, three events, let's go back to the other one. Three events so far, we've had them downtown, on the north end, on the mesa. And it is clearly a very great positive response from the community. It's been wonderful. And they, they're able to corner me and other people. We sit down and have coffee, and it's just an amazing, as I mentioned to Mr. Armstrong this morning in our meeting, an amazing return to basics in enhancing our communication with those that we serve. And this is a great way to do it. So, this is Casey's thing, and she did a great, a great, great job. So, thank you, Casey, for that. Again, it attracted national attention, and we'll let you know what date it'll be that you can go buy your Time Magazine. January 22 at 8:30, we'll be at McDonald's on Milpus, 29 South Milpus. February 19 at 10:00 AM, we'll be at Starbucks at 208 West Correo. It's a wonderful time, and it's, again, back to basic policing and community relations. That's my report, and I'm ready for any more, some more questions you might have for me.
Thank you. We do have some public comment. I have a speaker slot from Dorothy Littlejohn if you'd like to come on up. You have two minutes here at the podium.
My name is Dorothy Littlejohn, and I live on the east side. A couple of years ago, when Pueblo was around, some of us were concerned about deportations occurring from the checkpoints. And the concern was that the deportations had accelerated so quickly in Santa Barbara, and the amounts are so high compared to other communities. So, we started monitoring the checkpoints. And when we first started monitoring the checkpoints, the police were very rude and rough with the Hispanic people. They pushed them around and, you know, just be rude. When we started bringing our cameras or the lights and everything, then their behavior became much better. And it continues to be good to this. And they say, thank you, sir. May I please have your license, sir? So, we like that very much better. We have tried to encourage onlookers at the checkpoints to stick around and, you know, monitor the situation. One more recent concern is racial profiling. Since the law changed regarding unlicensed drivers being able to recover their cars quickly from being impounded, we believe that racial profiling has shifted from the checkpoints to the individual officers stopping individual drivers. This, of course, is much more difficult to monitor. But we do know that people living on the west side believe that it happens with individual police people waiting for workers to picked up, be picked up for their rides at the Foodland Market, individuals getting meals at Cucca's Restaurant, or getting snagged from the parking lot. This is what people have told me. And workers getting rides from Fernando's Deli down the street on, down the street. The residents living on the west side reported that it happens in the mornings before noon, early morning and before noon. This is a concern. We would love to see some sort of driver's license for workers whose immigration status is in limbo, as are some many thousands of prospective immigrants. Some counties have implemented this kind of policy so that workers can get insurance and a driver's license... and a driver's license, at least temporarily, until their immigration status changes.
You need to wind up, please. You're beyond, you're beyond your two minutes.
Oh, I am. Okay. Well, that was what I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other speaker slips? One more? Mr. Bard? You're it. Yep. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, just a quick point, which is all I have time for anyway. So this year, I'm rolling out public health activities. And regarding the police department report, I would encourage, going forward, if council would request, more on pedestrian and bicyclist and driver safety information, which I'm sure there's a place for and a procedure and a process for that. But just coming in cold, obviously, I came in because I'm primarily concerned right now with the other issues, infectious disease issues. But really, I would just encourage, just as the way of going about police reporting, and then, again, I may just be naive, and there may be a whole process for this, but, gosh, you know, I'm just so concerned. I remember, was it a year or two ago, we had all those pedestrian fatalities right out here on State Street. And we've had so many bicycle fatalities in this county, and, you know, when I first came out here many, many years ago, I was just very concerned about some of the dangerous intersections. And I always feel bad. One of the reasons I'm so outspoken is because I didn't say anything, and I didn't go anybody, to anybody and say, "This is a dangerous street, and a 12-year-old kid was killed on the way to school on one of the very spots that caught my attention." So, you know, silence is death. And, you know, I'd rather be poked fun of every now and then, or put my foot in my mouth every now and then, and, you know, just take the heat in the kitchen. But I'm grateful that we're here, that we, we can talk about police policy. And, you know, people even, you know, that are, you know, a little off, off with their criticisms can still come in here and complain because there are a lot of countries like, you know, Putin's Russia to pick on them, where you can't do it, you know? So thanks for hearing this, and just try to work the bicycle pedestrian thing if we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That closes public comment. It's to the council for any questions or comments at this point. Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. And Chief Sanchez, thanks again for being here and with your report. And also, I do want to thank you for having good representation at meetings like with the downtown organization. That continues on. Those kinds of relation-building things are really extremely helpful, and I appreciate all that you've shown us here. I didn't know about the coffees thing. That sounds really interesting. I don't know why you've sent us stuff, I'm sure, and it just went right by me. So I'm going to bother you sometime and come over and have coffee. Two things. I understand that, at least it appears, that the 211 hotline, the helpline that's been in existence for a long time is possibly in jeopardy. I'm sure that some who are in desperate need of assistance would switch over and call 911 as they're directed, but do you foresee any issues if that were to go away? I mean, it's been, it's maybe a first line for somebody to call for some assistance, or I remember I was a volunteer years ago in the suicide, as a suicide hotline. It kind of seemed like we got a lot of that kind of, those kinds of calls, and we would get the police involved as quickly as we could. Do you foresee any issues, or what would you advise for people who have those kinds of reaching out for assistance situations?
Madam Mayor, Councilman House, it is a concern. It's been a great tool. The funding is going away, I believe, but people are still calling us, our 911 line, with non-911 issues. But, you know, we're not going to criticize that. We're going to take every call, and we're going to deal with it appropriately and get somebody there. But it's, it's out of the chief's office, out of my office control, and even the city's control. I know that the sheriff is very concerned with it. They use it quite a bit more than we do, to tell you the truth. And actually, it's going to be an agenda item in two weeks at our county chiefs and sheriff meeting, and maybe I can give you some better information about what our other options are going to be at that time. But it is on our agenda's item.
My concern comes because I believe that you're probably going to get more calls on 911 for 911 issues, and you'll become, de facto, the 211 service. And it seems like we need to be prepared for that if there's not additional funding showing up from somewhere.
Well, we're there, and, you know, we'll continue to do our job and provide the services. And if it's not an emergency, you know, we've got a person on the line. We're certainly going to address it and hope that, you know, that 911 doesn't call in at that time, which is rare that it does happen. But we're on, we're looking at it. The sheriff is looking at it specifically, and I'll have a better answer for you as to what our options are going to be. But clearly, you're absolutely right. Our 911 calls are going to be, are going to increase, no doubt about it.
Okay, well, thank you. And then, with respect to the comment that we just heard a few moments ago, I'd like you to take us through what would, what should a person do if they, if they suspect or they're concerned about racial profiling by the police, or rough treatment, or you can imagine any of the things that people are fearful of with regards to their interface with the police department? To whom should they turn? I mean, they certainly can contact us on city council, but what process exists for inquiring into or looking into those kinds of concerns?
Well, racially, racial profiling is illegal. Across this country, police officers who have been found to have racially profiled were no longer cops after that incident. I would like to think that my officers in Santa Barbara would not put their job in jeopardy to racially profile. Again, you know, it's just something that is not tolerated by me, and I'm pretty tough about those things. I'm a tough disciplinarian. In terms of a community member has a concern and they want to make a lodge a complaint, we have a complaint process, and I think it's a good process. We do investigate, we investigate things that come in anonymously because we have to, by law, do that. And the whole issue of an internal affairs investigation is to get to the truth, whatever that is. And we do discipline our employees for things where it's necessary, and, and when there is no discipline and the, and it comes to a conclusion, we advise the citizen what the outcome was and why. Basically, they can come to the watch commander, they can come and fill out a complaint form at the front desk, they can call us, they can call dispatch and ask for a supervisor to go to their residence, and the supervisor will respond and take the complaint, and we will investigate it, no matter what the complaint is. And we get these a lot, and we investigate them. It's difficult, many times, to convince someone that it's going to be objective, but it is. And we do our darndest to get to that. But I'm here to tell you that the words "racial profiling" make me ill. I think it's completely illegal, and I would tell you that that would not be tolerated for a half a second if that were to happen here. And when we have received those types of complaints, we have investigated them. And in my almost 13 years here, we have never found one to be an allegation that was actually racial profiling. Now, could the officers be rude, and maybe, could they have handled themselves better? Yes. And we deal with that. Because if, if a citizen believes they're being racially profiled, we need to look into that. At the end of the day, if it isn't racial profiling, then what was it? Was it the attitude of the officer, which we have to address, and we address? Was it the way the person was treated or spoken to? We address that. If a person says it's racial profiling and we, and we discover that it isn't, we just don't let it go. Well, then what was it? It had to have been something to give this person that feeling, so let's check it out. And sometimes it's nothing. Sometimes it is those things that a person, an officer may be rude to a person, or maybe should have spoken them more professionally, and we, we keep track of that. So that is the, those are the options, and we clearly take all complaints and we investigate them all.
Thank you for the thorough answer. So watch commander, that would be a contact at the front desk is where a person would go?
Let me give, the watch commander's phone number, so the community that's watching can see. It's 897-2376. And if they have a concern, any concern, and then call the watch commander, and we'll go from there.
And they could feel, I mean, I'm just going to have you say it, because people will say to me, "They don't, they don't need to fear retribution," or a sense of, I mean, there's a, there's some way that you protect people, or if they're going to make a, express their concerns like that, that they can feel safe in doing that.
Well, we will say that because we mean that, and we're hoping that the people would take that to heart. Because if we have a problem, then we need to get to it. If, if people don't tell me what the problem they think is there, we're never going to know. And they can rest assured that retribution plays no part in this. We're public servants, and if the community believes that maybe there's something that they may have been mistreated, or maybe could have been handled a little bit differently, if not totally differently, then they need to tell us, and, and we're obligated to investigate every single one of those.
Thank you, Chief Sanchez.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you. Chief, do you have a response to Ms. Littlejohn's concerns that officers might station themselves at Supercucas or Foodland on the west side? I, I live on the west side, and I, I know that there are undocumented drivers in that area.
Well, there are undocumented drivers all over our city, and, and not all of them happen to be Latino. And I will tell you that our traffic division and our patrol folks have specific locations where we have evidence of traffic accidents, especially those during the school hours. That is a reason, in the morning, we've got officers near Supercucas there by the, by the market, because kids are, are going to school. We do not have a, a crosswalk there. I need you to understand that, right now, my motor officers are not just out writing tickets. My, my motor officers are getting off their bikes, parking their bike at Supercuka, and walking kids across the street to school. And I think that, so are they enforcing the laws? Of course. But every morning, my motor officers are a part of our school crossing process. And we've gotten calls over the last couple of months that, you know, we're, we're staking out things, when in fact, my officers are walking kids across the street. So we can't be everywhere, and, and if you see something, you're going to think, "Well, that, that must be what they're doing." In terms, in terms of deportation, the city of Santa Barbara Police Department has never played a part in one deportation. And, you know, when people get arrested and go to county jail and, and ICE shows up, that's unbeknownst to us. ICE does not tell the Santa Barbara Police Department when they're going to show up or why. They just show up to the county jail, and they do that business there. But we have never deported one person in terms of the Santa Barbara Police Department. But our traffic issues and checkpoints, they are watched very carefully, and we do the best that we can. We do tow cars, we do cite people. But in terms of Supercucas and other locations, I will tell you that, yes, there are specific areas where we've had traffic accidents, especially close calls with pedestrians or children, and my motor officers are parking their bikes and walking kids across the street as well. So I think we're trying to, to do it wholeheartedly, but we are not racially profiling, and we don't need to do that. And it's unacceptable if we were ever to do that, trust me.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wiley, I, I don't think that there's anything you're going to be able to say that will satisfy those people that choose to object to the gang injunction, but could you walk us through where we stand in the legal process now?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes, you know, in, in direct response to your question, just again, we've said this many times, the city's gang injunction is directed at 30 specific, named adult individuals, and only those 30 individuals. And it, those names were provided to us by the police department, by the experts in the police department, in terms of gang crime in Santa Barbara, gang activity. And that's, that's why they were named as defendants. It's directed at no one else. And, and that's why we feel pretty strongly when people say this injunction could lead to profiling. It's like, that's just totally inconsistent with an injunction aimed at, named individuals. The injunction would only apply to those individuals. Currently, we're, we're dealing with an issue having to do with our ability to use the police department records, primarily arrest records, of those individuals when they were juveniles. They're all adults now, by many years in most cases, but the, the objection was raised to our ability to gain access to police reports for those individuals when they were juveniles. And so we've got a hearing actually on January 18th in front of Judge Adams, Superior Court Judge Tom Adams, where we hope Judge Adams will issue a decision on a motion filed by the district attorney's office to gain access. And, and just to be clear about this, the access to these records, it's, it's a little frustrating because they're, they, they actually already have the records. It's, it's to get permission for the police department to look at their own records and for the district attorney to look at those records, that they've seen those records in the past, but to use them in this context. So, anyway, there's a hearing, January 18th, and we hope Judge Adams will issue a ruling in our favor. He has, in one instance, already ruled in our favor, but this hearing is on more cases, more individual defendants. And then we have a court hearing in front of the trial judge, Judge Stern, on January 28th, and we hope to talk about trial dates on January 28th, at least in terms of scheduling. But one of the problems we've been dealing with is the uncertainty with whether we'll get access to these police department records before we talk about the scheduling of the trial.
When you say trial, what's the actual trial? Who's on?
Well, there, you know, as a Superior Court civil action, we will be required, and we're the plaintiffs, the, the city and the district attorney's office, we will be required to prove our case that we're entitled to an injunction. We'll be, for example, we'll be required to prove that, you know, one of the main things we allege, that there is a gang, a real gang on the east side of the city, and a real definite gang on the west side of the city, and that our 30 individuals are members of one or, one of those gangs, and that they should be restrained, that ultimately, at the end of the trial, and this will, our witnesses, our evidence, will be our police department gang experts. Ultimately, at the end of this trial, the judge will be convinced that we proved that there, that these gangs do exist, these individual defendants are members of those gangs, and that she will issue us a permanent injunction ordering these individuals, for example, not to associate with one another. That if we were to find one or two or three of them in a car together after this injunction had been issued, they would be in violation of the injunction, and we could get them served and bring them into court in front of the judge and say, "Judge, you ordered these three people not to associate with each other, and the police department found them driving in a car in the middle of the night. Maybe they were east-side members, and they were driving through the west side." And we would take that pretty seriously and seek to have the judge get them held in contempt of court for violating the injunction. That's, that's the nature of the case we're, we're pursuing.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, back a moment to our B. coordinators in the community policing. I know that, for example, the downtown organization, we've, we've assigned citizen block captains, and I know the Milpus Association is doing quite a bit on their end to help out with a community liaison-type force, you know, not assigned, but, but a community liaison. And I've used personally the B. coordinators myself extensively over the last few months for non-9/11-type calls, for nuisance-type calls, and, and very satisfactorily so. I wonder if you could, for the viewing audience, talk about that a little bit, you know, as Mr. House mentioned, even the demise of the, the 211 number, and, and what non-9/11 calls, because a lot of people are upset about certain things that are nuisance crimes, for example, but aren't necessarily 9/11-type calls. Should they be trying to contact B. coordinators directly? Should they be calling the watch captain's number? What should folks do when they really, they would like to see some police presence, but it's not a 9/11 situation?
Well, I think, first of all, thank you for bringing that up, because the, the B. coordinators are really dealing with the quality of life issues in the city that can turn into a crime. Blight breeds crime, and the B. coordinators are going around dealing with a variety of properties and all those sorts of things. I really think it's important that if, if someone wants to talk, and it's not a 911 call, to the B. coordinators about that sort of thing, they can still call the watch commander. Because we have a watch commander every day, 365 days a year. The B. coordinators are not there every day. They get days off as well. But something that could be sent to, to that watch commander will be sent to Sergeant Harwood, who's sitting next to me, who supervises the B. coordinators, and we disseminate those assignments on a weekly basis. We've taken it so seriously that a few months ago, when we now have four B. coordinators and Sergeant Harwood, the B. coordinator are assigned to my office. They're not assigned to patrol. I meet with Sergeant Harwood and the B. coordinators personally every Tuesday for at least an hour to discuss community issues and quality of life issues that they're addressing that week, every, every Tuesday. And I think the best thing to do would be to call the watch commander, or you can call Sergeant Harwood, and we'll get somebody out there. But I think it's, again, if it's not a 911 call, that's what we would prefer. That's what we would prefer.
Anyone else? First off, I want to thank you for...
First off, I want to thank you for immediately talking with Dr. Cash and members of the school district administration last month after the horrific event at Sandy Hook. And I know you don't want to go into every detail of what you're doing, but just to know that you're reviewing things that have already been put in place and then assessing what's already in place and hopefully improving those is very important. And I've heard from members too about, not necessarily relation to that event, but just the stronger connection between the police department and the school district has been well received, especially with the resources officer at the high schools. So I just want to thank you for that and know that you'll continue working together with the school district. I wanted to attend the Citizen Academy graduation, I was planning on it, I was called out of town, so I'll apologize ahead of time that I can't be there, but congratulations on that as well. I know that that too has been a big issue, especially in different parts of town that feel like we need a better connection between police headquarters or police department and the general public. So I think that you're showing some great results there. Also in coordination, I know that with the restorative policing division and the meeting that you had in November and trying to be more efficient with all the different people working with the same individuals, as was mentioned during public comment today, there's the vulnerability index count. And I'm pretty sure our restorative policing team is working with the Common Ground and the C3H Collaborative on helping them with the count itself because that will help us in terms of interacting with homeless individuals in our area. I just got the last stats from Sergeant Olson, and in November and December of last year, 16 individuals were taken off the streets in Santa Barbara, put into some form of housing placement, and other two were reunited with family or friends of some sort. So things are happening, it's slow, it's, I know, frustrating when some individuals act inappropriately, whether they're homeless or not, and we get those emails and hear and hear about that, and I think that's what Mr. Rouse was talking about. So it's a continual process, and I know the B coordinator program is really working out there as well. So that will be a big, I think, having that data of the new vulnerability index and the count will help us in our work in terms of who we're interacting with and how we can coordinate, whether through restorative court or the county or social service agency. So thank you again for that. Finally, mentioning about realignment, I know that's a big issue for the county as they're looking at a new county jail and how they're gonna fund it. And it'd be, I'd be interested to hear your thoughts and opinions in the future about what the city can do in helping the county realize its needs. I know that they're looking for state funding, I believe that Sheriff Brown did receive a grant that was larger than the one that they had before, which is a good thing, but that's gonna take a while. And in the meantime, there are state prisoners who are being released, and because our county jails are overcrowded, more and more people are being released early. So, and that, and I think that's part of, one of, like you said, one of the, one of the issues that we're seeing in terms of a rise in burglaries and so forth is partly because of that. So I don't, I'm not quite sure how we can assist with the county in such ways, or whether it's talking with our state representatives or whatever it may be, but I just want to offer our assistance in that way because it all comes down to public safety in the end each and every day.
Well, we appreciate that. The sheriff and I and the other chiefs are meeting again with the other tri-county sheriffs and chiefs, and we're trying to come up with some document that we can take to our councils and supervisors and say, this is what we have found out in public safety, this is the issue. I think it's gonna take not just Santa Barbara, but I think it's gonna take every city in our county, if not all tri-counties, to go to the state at some point and say, here it is. This is what we've experienced in terms of crime and recidivism, and we need to do something about it. And I think it's gonna, it's gonna take us all to do that, and I appreciate your comments. In terms of the issues of the BCs and all of that and the trust at the community, we're trying to build trust in all of our community. We have a lot of communities within our city, and we're doing our best to be the best communicators. Clearly, there will always be those that believe that maybe they're being ignored or that we're not paying attention or that we think, you know, here's the thing, if there's a community member that believes something in their heart, then we can't ignore it. It's their reality. If they believe that we're doing something a certain way, then we need to find out why they feel that way and not just say, no, that's not what it is, and move on. And I think over the last few years, we've really done a good job of that. We still have a ways to go. We're in a business of humans and we're not gonna be perfect. But we're committed to making ourselves better, knowing along the way that it's not always gonna work out the way everybody wants to. But we're giving it the best shot we can to be a better police department by communicating with everyone, giving everyone an opportunity. In the Spanish-speaking community, I believe we're making great strides with many people who appreciate us, and we're grateful, grateful for that. But whether they appreciate us or not, we're still gonna respond to their calls and do the best we can. And I thank you all for your support today.
Thank you. I don't see any of the lights on. Thank you for your time, chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, move on to item number 11.
Appointment of Mayor Pro Tem, Ordinance and Finance Committees, Council Liaisons to Advisory Groups, and Members of Regional Agencies.
Okay, before we get, we do have a public comment speaker request for this before we move forward. Why don't we have Alan Bleeker, why don't you come right out? Because there's no staff report for this, it's just making the appointments. Alan, why don't you come on up?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I stand before you as the newly-elected vice chair of the Milpus Action Task Force, also known as MATF. I'd like to thank the city for especially Paul Casey's hiring of John Jostis as a facilitator in our group. We are very excited and we're very excited about the possibility of, and the history already of John working with us in obviously a few groups that have differences of opinions and bringing us together to look for real progress. I'm here today to implore and encourage you to appoint a city council liaison to our committee who is impartial. Just like it wouldn't be in the best interest of our group to have somebody who doesn't like the idea of Casa Esperanza being in the neighborhood, it also would not be of benefit to have somebody as a representative from the city council as liaison to have somebody who is an advocate. So we feel that very strongly that there should be somebody who is a representative for the city council and is able to communicate back and forth with our group who is impartial and can look at it from both sides. Appreciate your time, thank you.
We'll start first with the Mayor Pro Tem and Ordinance and Finance Committee, and I first want to thank Councilmember Hotchkiss for doing really a very helpful and very great job last year as pro tem. This is, it's sometimes fun, but sometimes if I'm out of town or get booked, double or triple booked, it's nice to have someone who's willing to step up, so I do appreciate it.
Can be very time-consuming, this year.
Yes, it is. But you've served admirably and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
The practice has been to rotate this each year for one year and to go by seniority of the council, except if you've already done it before, to then pass it on to someone who hasn't had the chance. And so as I understand it, if there's consensus that believes Mr. Rouse, you're next. And if you would, if you want to accept the challenge of being mayor pro tem, you're on deck, as they say.
I'll accept the challenge, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, good. And, well, why don't we do that one first? So is there a, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Rouse to be mayor pro tem for 2013.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then for Ordinance Committee, Mr. House, you have served as chair and there's no rule to move it on or keep it, and you're the senior member if you'd like to keep it, I think.
I'd be honored to stay as chair for this next year.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Hotchkiss and Mr. Rouse, you have been serving as members of the ordinance committee, are you still interested in doing so?
I am very much, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rouse?
Continue as well.
Okay, so we'll keep, and why don't we just do finance, Mr. Francisco, as you've been chair, and are you still interested?
Status quo is just fine.
Status quo, so, sounds like the status quo for both ordinance and finance is in place. Is there a motion for that?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we get on to the advisory groups, and again, the standard practice has been, and we don't have any changes from last year to this year, as we've had in the past, so if you are the current liaison, to express if you're still interested in it, and sometimes there are alternates, sometimes there are not, and if there's more than one, then we can have that discussion. But maybe if we can just go through the list and then do one motion at the end instead of motion, because then we'll be here all day if we did a motion for each and every one, and Susan won't like that, so. So why don't we start with the advisory groups, council liaison, the airport commission, Mr. Rouse?
Yes, I'm still interested.
Okay. And ABR, Mr. Francisco?
That's just fine.
Okay, and alternate, Mr. House?
Sure.
Arts Advisory Committee, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Fine.
Building Fire Code Board of Appeals, Mr. House?
Madam Mayor, that one and the one following, they have very few meetings, but I haven't been able to attend any of them. If there's somebody else who would like to take that, it would be fine.
Following one's the Civil Service Commissioners. I don't even know if you sit in on those meetings for civil service or, because it's sort of its own.
I mean, nobody's contacted me about either one of them for anything in that time, so it's a pretty easy assignment, and I'm happy to keep it, but I just thought if somebody had a real interest, they're welcome to it. Okay.
I'm here in silence, so you're it, Mr. House. Okay. Community Development and Human Services Committee, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yes, please.
Okay. Community Events and Festivals Committee, Ms. Mario?
I'll stay.
Okay. Creeks Advisory Committee, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Please.
Mr. House is the alternate?
Yes.
Downtown Parking Committee, Mr. Rouse?
Yes, please.
And Mr. House is?
Yes.
Fire and Police Commissioners, Mr. White?
I'll stay.
Okay. Ms. Mario, Pension Commissioner?
Yes, I'd like to stay.
Harbor Commission, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Please.
HLC, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
The Housing Authority, Ms. Mario?
Yes.
Okay. The Library Board, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Okay. Now it says Living Wage Advisory Committee, does that mean it's been blank? Or is that being, I'm not quite sure why that was a cross out here.
There's been a request from staff that a liaison be appointed.
Ah, okay, so there isn't one and we'd like there to be one. Got it. So that's wide open if anyone is interested in.
I'd like to volunteer.
Okay, anyone? You got it, Ms. Mario, okay. Neighborhood Advisory Council, we have Ms. Mario and Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay. Parks and Rec Commission, Ms. Mario?
Yes.
Planning Commission, Mr. White? Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, Mr. Francisco?
I think I could pass that one along.
You can pass that, or is there anyone else interested?
If there's anyone interested.
Anyone else interested?
Otherwise, I'd be glad to stay.
Okay.
I'm interested, I'm just worried about being overbooked. It meets monthly?
No, not necessar, I mean, it kind of varies, so why don't you try it and see how it goes and?
May I?
You may.
I'll take an alternate position unless somebody else wants it, but I'm happy to.
So why don't we put Mario as the liaison and House as an alternate in case Ms. Mario's not available? Does that sound okay? All right. Sister Cities Board, Mr. Hotchkiss?
This is pretty darned active, and I have not been able to attend as many as I should, so if there's somebody who would like to step up to this, I would step down.
Unfortunately, there's no budget to take you anywhere, but it is a very good.
Yes, sir. Zero perks.
Anyone else interested? I can take that back, I mean, I've been involved with the.
Thank you, I think I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Youth Council, Ms. Mario?
Yes.
Okay. Single Family Design Review Board, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And alternate, Mr. House?
Yes.
Transportation Circulation Committee, Ms. Mario?
Yes.
And Mr. House, alternate. And then the Water Commission, Mr. White? Okay. All right. On to council committees, we have a committee on legislation with Mr. Francisco, Mr. House, and Mr. White. Are all three of you still?
I'm definitely interested in continuing. I think I've been chairing that, but we worked that out.
Okay. And then commuter rail exploration, myself, Mr. House, and Mr. Francisco?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm still interested. Yes, okay. Finance Committee, we already did, Mayor Pro Tem, we did, Ordinance Committee, we did. Sustainability Council Committee, myself, Mr. Rouse, and Mr. White, I'm still interested and as are the two of you, okay? And then, I don't know if we need the Zone One Solid Waste Franchise Ad Hoc Subcommittee anymore. Mr. Armstrong, can we delete one?
No, I think you can delete that one.
Okay, because that's now up to us as a group, so wow, we can take one off, that's very nice. We added one, we can take one away. Then city-related agencies, Coast Village Business Association, Mr. House?
Yes.
The Conference and Visitors Bureau also?
Yes.
And the downtown organization?
Yes.
Alternate, Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay. Santa Barbara Lodging Association, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And alternate, Mr. Rouse?
Yes.
Okay. Looking good, Santa Barbara Committee, Mr. Hotchkiss?
I'd be willing to step aside if somebody else would like to step up. If not, I'll retain that.
Anyone else interested? Still yours.
By acclamation.
Bye. Okay, if you could, if you'd be willing to keep that on? Okay, the Milpus Action Task Force, this one is open.
Madam Mayor, I have been attending those meetings, in fact, went to one of them today, and I would like to stay on it. And I'm disappointed, Mr. Bleeker, that if you thought I was too much of a cheerleader for Casa Esperanza, I wish you would have told me before the meeting, I, of course, I support Casa Esperanza, but I'm equally as supportive of the Milpus neighborhood, the residents and the businesses and the Milpus Community Association. And I feel that I can be a cheerleader for both and fair about the issue, but I guess if someone else is offering to go or is interested, but I feel strongly that I'm a really good person to do that job.
Okay, I see two lights on, Mr. White?
I would simply say, Madam Mayor, that I would volunteer to be the alternate on that if that would help things.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss, your lights on?
I'd be happy to do this with the admonition that I heard, which I think is that sort of keep your mouth shut and listen carefully, and I think that's what I would do. And not that Ms. Mario wouldn't, maybe she would now, but, you know, it's tough, but we are really there as referees and not as advocates, and we all have our preferences one way or another, but sometimes you do have to sit on your hands. So if the city council would like somebody besides or maybe even addition to Ms. Mario, I'd step forward.
Well, I reiterate that I would like the position, so can we take a vote then?
Well, let's see if we can, I mean, I, it's kind of hard to say who's impartial about a very hot topic for one way or another, I don't know if that's really the term. I mean, I think it's just being a listener and fair, and I think all seven of us could do that. I like the idea of having an alternate in case one can't make it, and, Mr. White, if you're willing to do that.
Just Madam Mayor also, but we have two representatives on a variety of committees, so that's not an impossibility. And if we had the two appendages of our philosophical spectrum here on there with Mr. Hotchkiss and Ms. Mario, I would think we would be well represented with the full scale.
So you are withdrawing your interest?
I'm offering, of course, as an alternative, but I'm just, I'm hearing Mr. Hotchkiss be enthusiastic about it, and I think we'd have good representation from the range of our various perspectives.
I see, okay. Mr. House?
Just remembering back to the East Side Study Group days, Ellie Langer, Councilmember Langer, and Councilmember Gil Garcia were jointly representing the city council at all of our meetings, and they both represented the council very well, and it was great they have their perspectives. And at that time, they were actually offered the opportunity to participate and be partners with us, I guess, is a way of saying it. I think that Mr. White's suggestion may be a very good one. I would really love to see Councilmember Mario continue, her reports back to council and her active engagement has been refreshing and I appreciate it. Mr. Hotchkiss's interest is also interesting to me.
So, Madam Mayor, I would make that motion, that Ms. Mario and Mr. Hotchkiss be our representatives on that, on MATF?
I'll second that.
Okay. Why don't we move that to consensus as we're doing everything at once? And actually, it still keeps with the, well, all right, there was a motion and a second, we'll make the, yes, I'm looking at my clerk here. So there's a move and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And actually, that fits the practice we've done, you've been attending those meetings, Ms. Mario, so, and I have the alternate, I think is a good idea, so, okay. The Presidio Joint Powers Committee, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Santa Barbara Beautiful, Mr. Hotchkiss?
I'm getting a little full here, if somebody would like to take it, but not Ms. Mario, because you've got so much stuff already. If anybody else would step up, great. Same for the Film Commission, although that isn't that demanding.
Anyone interested in either Santa Barbara Beautiful or the Film Commission?
I would do Santa Barbara Beautiful, Madam Mayor. And Madam Mayor, the Film Commission meets concurrently with the Conference and Visitors Bureau, I can take that one, because they're...
That makes sense. Okay, so Mr. White for Santa Barbara Beautiful, and Mr. House for the Santa Barbara Film Commission. Okay. Okay, now there's council representation, a regional agency, so we start with Beacon, that's Mr. House, so you...
Yes, ma'am, love to continue that.
The Kachuma Conservation Release Board, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And alternate, Mr. White? Okay. The Kachuma Operation Maintenance Board, same, too?
Yes.
Okay. The Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, we basically just did this the other, about a month ago, so myself and Mr. Francisco with two alternates, Ms. Mario and Mr. Hotchkiss, which actually now kind of all comes together. Central Coast Water Authority, Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And alternate, Mr. White? The City-County Affordable Housing Task Group, Mr. Francisco and Ms. Mario?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, okay. The City-County Solid Waste Task Group, again, is this with Zone One happening, do we still need to have this task group? What's your sense, Mr. Armstrong?
I think this group will still be related to the conversion technology of the Resource Recovery Park.
Oh, this is, right, right, this is dealing with Resource Recovery Park, yeah, that's a bigger thing, so, yes, absolutely. Keep that going, Mr. Rouse and Mr. White, okay. CAC, Mr. House?
This is a great honor, I'd like to continue.
Okay. Low Sand, this is all done, that's done by SB CAG, I've been supervisor Carver Hall's alternate, so that's why it says alternate there, and that will be decided at their meeting, later this month.
And Madam Mayor, if and when you can't attend, it would be of interest for me as being actively involved with our own...
Low Sand doesn't work that way, it's an actual appointed, just like it is for SB CAG for you to be my alternate.
Understood.
Yeah, so. The APCD and SB CAG usually are the same individuals, and I would still be interested in being the member of, Mr. House, you want to continue?
I'd love to be your alternate.
Great, and thank you for participating this year, that's been great. Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District Board Liaison, Ms. Mario?
Yes.
And Mr. House as the alternate. And then the South Coast Gang Task Force Leadership Council, I'm still interested in that, and Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, and then others are, if there are other organizations that you've been appointed to, not by us, but by other entities, I'm still the president of the Channel Counties Division of the League of California Cities, and, Mr. House, your name's listed under local government.
Yes, we don't, the city's not paying for that, I retain my membership with that, thanks.
Okay. And those are all of them, any other comments or questions on that, or is there a motion to move all of these by acclamation?
There is.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That worked out very well, thank you. Tri, I saw, well, I won't say it. We have a couple of closed sessions to read.
Item 12, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, and item 13, conference with labor negotiator.